Greetings folks. This is Brian Harris with the Independent Black Voters on Facebook. This is now the season, the political season, and we believe that our vote is not free. And our vote must be won by listening to our agenda. We are vetting as many candidates as we can in the Clark County area. And we will post it on Facebook on the Independent Black Voter in various platforms. It is important that we be educated voters. It is important that we know what our agenda is and hold people accountable to focus on us. So today I have Mr. Martin Walker here again, one of the, actually the president of the Independent Black Voters Nevada. How are you?
Good day to you and thank you for having me on and good day to all of those who'll be watching this presentation.
Okay, and I have this. Miss. How are you, Mrs. Akira?
Zakia.
Zakia?
Yes, I'm Zakia.
Zakia.
I just murdered her name by the way.
And I'm so conscious of it, that's why I'm murdering now.
Yeah, I'm starting to think he murders it on purpose. It's Zakia, IKEA with a Z, Brian.
Yeah, I know, and now I'm having a problem with IKEA. So anyway, I thank you for coming on. For those of you who don't know, Mrs. Akia is the Vice President of the Independent Black Voters Nevada Chapter. These have recently come on in place and I'd like to thank those two, both Martine and Zakia. Martine and Zakia for taking on this assignment of helping Nevada be educated voters. Today we have Dr. Erica Smith, who is running for, is it for mayor?
No.
No. City Council Ward Five.
Okay, see, I'm sorry, City Council.
Thank you, Zakia.
You're welcome.
I'm old, so they have to.
We don't wanna, we don't wanna put no lies out there now. So wait a minute, because people will come and say, well, wait a minute, I heard you're right. Yeah, I don't want that smoke, so.
So Ward Five, so what I want you to do actually is tell us a little bit about yourself. Tell us a little bit about your platform and tell us what, where is Ward Five? So people will actually know, are they in your ward or not?
Okay, well, first of all, I want to thank Independent Black Voters for having me on this afternoon to talk about my platform and talk about who I am as we, as you conduct this interview. So first of all, I'd like to say, hey, Ward Five is in, if you're talking about Ward Five, you're talking about Historic Westside. You're talking about Symphony Park area, a little bit of that Fremont downtown area. You're also talking about if you get on that 95, you're going all the way up to East Bonanza Road. So all of that is part of Ward Five. So I like to say that because a lot of times when people say Ward Five, they only think about Historic Westside. And it's so much bigger, it is really a big ward. Like I have a whole map right here, guys. This is, all this purple is Ward Five. So it's a very big ward. And so myself, I'm Dr. Erica Smith. I am, I hail from a city called St. Mary's, Georgia. So I'm a Southern girl, I like to say I bring a lot of Southern charm. I have lived in Las Vegas since 2008, so I'm not new to the city. And so this is, I'm just enjoying everything. And so my platform, I am running for Las Vegas City Council Ward Five. And so my platform's on three major things. We're talking about affordable housing. We're talking about being that we have economic development, being that that come from private sector as well as maybe the public sector, but we're looking for the economic growth. And then we're also talking about public safety. So those are some of the, those are the three big platforms that I'm looking at. But of course, we know there's so much more to tackle specifically in Ward Five that we can absolutely talk about as well.
Okay, great. We're gonna start off and let Martin, you go first, ask a question. Zakia, you go second and ask a question, and I'll be third and I'll ask a question.
All right, sure. Good evening, Dr. Smith, hope you're doing well.
I'm doing well, how are yourself?
I'm great, I'm great. Thank you for sharing this time with us and giving us a chance to delve into who you are and why you're running. Before I really get into my questions, because I do have a couple of questions, I'm glad for your opening. Can you just tell our listeners and our audience exactly why is it that you're running in the first place? What do you think you bring to the table that, that would fit the needs of Ward Five?
Thank you for asking that. And I always start this, because I get this question like every time I interview, right? Why, what's your why? And I always say, if me, if not me, then who? And if you know a little bit more about my background, I'll share a little bit more about that. I am a dentist by profession, I graduated from Mayharry Medical College, which is a historically black college and university. But what's so special about Mayharry Medical College is that its mantra is to serve the underserved. When I see Ward Five, I see a ward that has been neglected. I see a ward that needs TOC. I see a ward that needs someone that can lead with compassion and really care about the people that it serves. And so I believe because I have been trained and I come from that mantra where I'm serving underserved. I naturally, Ward Five is a ward that I want to help. I feel that I'm ready to serve. And I believe that I have the talent and the skills to make the difference that it needs.
Okay, thank you for that. I like to ask that question, not because it's a standard question, because it actually helps me drive the questions I actually do ask. So I do, I do agree that the top two, at least two of the top, well, actually, three of the top issues are housings, economic development, and public safety. And I do want to get into those topics more intimately down the road. But, but since you opened up saying, we're starting off with, if not you, then who? There were like nine other people who were saying the same thing. So the answer for that, to that who, could be one of those other people. So what sets you aside or makes you more qualified than any of those other people who are vying for the same vote that you're vying for?
Well, I would say, like I said, my background definitely, definitely equips me very well to be a.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, for the sake of our audience, rather than saying your background, give us some specifics about your background that uniquely sets you aside from the other people vying for the office.
So I will tell you that no one has the same background that I have in terms of being a doctor. And because of the schooling that I have as well. So you'll see, if you've seen my card, you'll, you'll see that it says, because brains matter. That's how I kind of started out. But now we've kind of morphed into really being the people's choice. And what makes me different is that a lot of these other people that have entered into the race, and I don't, you said nine people, there's eight of us total. And so, but I don't get into like, oh, how many people are running? Because it doesn't matter, because I have to run my race. But we morphed into something that's called, what we're calling, the people's choice. And the reason why we're calling, saying that I am the people's choice, because when you look at some of the other people that are in the race, they've been around for a long time, some of in Ward Five for a very long time. But they haven't enacted any change, even though they've been in that community for a very long time. I'm a little bit more of a newcomer, because I've only been around maybe a couple of years or so, coming into Ward Five and, and doing things in that community. And so for me, I get to kind of have that lens where I was able to look outside in. I wasn't just already in it. But what's happening is that the voters are saying, as we're meeting with voters, they're saying, we want a fresh face. We want a fresh perspective. And so I believe that I am that fresh face and that fresh perspective, and I am willing to listen to the people. And therefore, we went from because brains matter, because we do believe that smart people need to be in office. But we also realized that more so the people's choice resonates more with the people. And that's what the people are looking for, they're looking for someone that listens to them and really cares. And that they haven't seen and hasn't been making the same old promises.
So I think some of your point is well taken. So there's eight, there's nine, total, there's eight others. Two of the others have served in office, elected office before. The other six have not. So to your point of having a fresh face, there were six other fresh faces. And all of them believe they have brains and their degree or whatever else gives them a background. So again, what sets you aside, what specifically, other than being a doc, having a degree, sets you aside from those other six, it makes you the best people's choice to, to, to serve the needs of Ward Five?
Well, Martin, I have, I've been in this community, I've owned practices, I'm also, I'm still a business owner. I've had businesses, brick and mortar businesses. I don't think any of my other opponents have had those things. So I bring business sense to the table. I bring community sense to the table. I've served my community through my sorority, Alpha Cap Alpha Sorority Incorporated. So you know, we, we definitely are about serving the community. So I bring a lot of other things that my opponents don't bring. Those are the things that operate.
Okay, so, so let's delve into the service, because you also mentioned that you, that you serve. What, what, have there been any other leadership positions outside of sorority that you've held in, in any organization? If so, what? Because I don't think you said you served any political or elected positions yet. So, so what, so again, what I'm looking for is, for the audience purposes, what makes you, what, what have you, what can they say, I've served here, I've, I've been on this committee, I've done this for the veterans groups? Something that, that the people can look at?
Well, in the business sector, I currently serve as a marketing director for J.Cam Partners Zambia, J.Cam Partners and J.Cam Partners USA. So those are because of some of the skills I bring, they were, they wanted to bring me on to help bridge those relationships and connections between Africa and USA. So those are some of the things that I'm doing currently.
Okay, let's, let's, let's give, I want to give Mrs. Akia a chance to ask a couple of questions.
Hello, hello, hello. So honestly, my question is probably gonna be very closely related to what Martin has to say. I know you, a little bit more personal, Erica, but just because you're not, you have to think about it as, you're not just speaking to myself, Brian and Martin, you're speaking to an entire group of constituents that you potentially will vote for you. Right, so we want to give them an idea of what you bring to the table in the sense of, we understand your accolades, the things that you have accomplished, but how does that transfer into your position? Or would that transfer into the position as city councilwoman? For example, because you, you said something about running businesses and having a good business sense. How does that relate to being a city councilwoman for Ward Five? What does that bring for the people there?
Well, what it brings for the people is when you have someone that has a well-balanced, I like to say, life, work sense. It's gonna, all of that translates into what we do in city council. We have, we look at city council budgets, we're gonna approve an annual budget along with our city manager. We're gonna be looking at, we have licenses, so if you're doing business within the city of Las Vegas, you're gonna apply for those business licenses to do business within the city. You're gonna, you know, you're gonna have a new business, or you're gonna do a renewal of, for an existing business. So those are some of the things, looking at, even though I'm only one vote, we're gonna sit there and we're gonna be looking at zoning. You're talking about people coming before you that have, that want to do projects within the city. You have developers that want to do projects within the city limits. And specifically, they may want to do something within Ward Five. I have several developers that have come to me already and said that they would love to do some, some projects in Ward Five. So those are some of the things that we get to look at when you're, those are part of the city council, part of the city council functions. Those are a few. So having a sense of business and definitely helps, because you can say, okay, I can understand it from that perspective. And so when they're coming and talking to you about these different projects, or there's a budget in front of you, you're gonna probably understand that a little bit more. It definitely has an advantage.
Yes, it has an advantage for you, because again, like you just said, you understand that. But when you think about your constituents, especially the constituents in Ward Five, which quote unquote, most people don't believe they even have a sense of business, those that live in Ward Five. How do you help your constituents understand your business and, and why it would even make sense for someone to have business sense, to even be in that position?
Well, what, some of the things that I would like to do in Ward Five, because I feel like some of the current leadership that they've had, people make decisions for them, and then they come afterwards and want to tell them, and then everyone, especially in sort of West Side, they end up being in the uproar about it. So what I would like to really be doing is having those town, having those town hall meetings.
Lady, is that it? You ain't even saying nothing. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hit you.
Okay, it's really having those, it's having those town hall meetings, having those community conversations with constituents where we can break it down, so that they can understand what is it that we're looking to do. And we can also get community input as well. I think that that's very important, because I've attended some of these meetings, and it was like after the fact that you're meeting with the community. Because everyone was mad. We, I don't want that, I want to have a conversation about what's already on the table. What we have on the table, what we should be looking for, get community input, and then be able to make a rational decision as well. So I think that those things are very important, having more community outreach, having more community communication. Because I see some words, they're doing a lot of things, they're having a lot of interactions with small businesses. And I don't think we do any of them, we have lots of businesses.
Right. So let me ask you. Sorry, excuse me, I'm sorry, I have to go out to this, but how would you bring more communication into that space?
We're gonna have, we're gonna have those community conversations, like, one thing I say that I really like that they're doing over in Ward Two, is that they're going to have in those small, they're interviewing the small businesses and they're having, though, and given that business exposure, I like that. But I also like when you're having more community events, because I don't think there's enough events, I don't think there's enough conversation with the community. I think there could be more of that. So I'm definitely looking to do more of that under my leadership.
Before Brian, can you expand on that? Because I, I know that you, because of the thing that you do business-wise, you also have connections to the actual, to, to the African community, African business owners. And talking about the economic development in Ward Five, what about your thoughts on attracting more imports or other African, you know, businesses to, to, to that area for that economic development?
I love that question, Mark, I would love that. Definitely I do have a connection to the African diaspora here in Las Vegas. And J.Cam Partners is, like I said, Zambia, that is a African-led, the owner is a Zambian. So, and that was part of the reason why they put me in that position. What I'm really looking to do with the city that I think is really exciting. And I haven't even talked to any of the people that are running for mayor, I hope that they're gonna be on board with my idea. But I want to get us a sister city. I've already spoken to the mayor of Livingston Zambia, and she is very open. And I like that she's a female too, I hate to say that, guys, but she's a female. And I've already spoken to her, had a conversation last year, we were exploring it with North Las Vegas. But really, Las Vegas would be the best place that is suited to have a sister city. But currently, when I, currently the mayor that we're under leadership in, she's just not, you know, she's basically checked out, she's ready to get out of there. So we're gonna revisit that with the new mayor, whoever that is, and have that sister city. But as far as having any business in Ward Five, I would love to have, bring some of that import export to Ward Five. That would be something I, I would definitely like to explore.
Thank you. Brian, you're muted.
Yeah, okay, my button is, okay, I would like you, Dr. Smith, talk to me in as much as you can in detail. We have obviously two, a homelessness problem that is being pushed more and more into Ward Five. How, give me specifics on what do you think in the capabilities of a city councilwoman that you would look to try to do, and then affordable home ownership in the historic, in Ward Five? What, what's your thoughts? And what would make you different, you know, from somebody else? That's why I asked for details, because everybody can say what, they, they know, they know the question. I would like to know your answer.
Well, I was hoping that you were asked these questions. I mean, because it is a known fact that Ward Five is, has the most homelessness ratio demographic population of, out of all six of the wards. And so it is something that we have to tackle, we can't just push it underneath the rug. I don't believe in criminalizing homelessness people, because I was homeless. See, so I come from a different perspective of how that looks. But when we're looking at the issue and addressing homelessness, we have to know that that issue is multifaceted. That it's not easy, and we sit here and say it's easy, we're lying. And we say that it doesn't have layers, we're lying. We have to say it's multiple layers. There's a mental health layer, then there's a layer where some people want to stay on the streets. Then it's a layer where people do want help, and we have to provide those resources and really, and really provide a way. I actually, I am a proponent of tiny homes. So that's something I'm really big, I would love to see like tiny homes. I would even live in a tiny home, like I think they're great. But those are some of the things, so there's different layers that we have to first start at when we start talking about the issue of homelessness. That's just number one. Okay, there's no easy answer. And yes, they are built, there's, there's things that's being built now to address more and be able to serve more of that population. But we have to start with how people even got homeless. Because it's, most people out here, there's one check away from being homeless. It's one situation in your life that can happen that have you in that very position. And right now, we have eviction rates that are just off the charts. And that, it comes down to legislation that didn't go through. So that's why I believe that we have to be working with our state legislature, our federal, on a federal level, state level. And all of, even at the, even at the county level. We have to all be working together, because these issues are not where one single person can solve it, or one single entity can solve. We have to all be working together, because these are tough issues. And no one wants to tackle them, or some people even want to deal with them. But my thing with homelessness detail, we're gonna have to look at, are the resources we have working? We have to analyze that, what do we have in place right now? Is that working? If it's working, if we can say yes, that it's working, and we want to say, okay, how can we expand on that to tackle? And we need to look at how much housing, how much do we really need? Because it's more and more homeless every day. That eviction court is crazy every day. People are on the streets and don't have places to go. This, this is real, and it's real scary at the same time. So we have to look at that now, if we analyze and say that what we're putting forth, the resource, because they are building some more things for homelessness. If we say, no, it's not working, then we need to go back to the drawing board and say, okay, let's look at different ways. Look at, let's look at cities where it did work. And so I think that we have to look at models where, if we're saying, no, it's not working here in Las Vegas, we want to look at models of cities where it is working, and then take the bull by the horns and get it done. But we know Ward Five, yeah, I mean, it's, I mean, every time I draw, yeah, it's just sad. And it's something we really have to get a hold of, we cannot let our city be like this. We have to really tackle the reasons why people are in that space. And there's so many different reasons. And I think we have to start with, how did they get there? How do we get them out of there? Is there a program that we put together where, and I know we're putting some programs together where we're putting workforce connections? So there's a lot of things that are in the works to address it, but I think maybe we need to move a little faster. I'm, I'm hoping that we can move a little faster. When we're talking about affordable housing, we now have shared downtown Historic Westside that just broke ground. And so that should be up, I think, maybe by 2025. But we need more of those type of projects in Ward Five. Where people can work, where they can, where they can live and play and do all the things that are necessary in their everyday lives. So those are things, yeah, we have to be talking about affordable housing. I mean, that is big on everybody's mind right now. Is, even mine, it's really big on my mind that people, I mean, I just had somebody on my team last week. She had to make, you know, you have to make three times the rent. So we had to give her documentation to get her into her housing. So I'm, I'm there seeing people go through it in my, on my own campaign team. And so it's one of those things where I don't believe in this three times, I believe people can afford rent. But when you have to go and you're not making enough money, then we have to go back to people's income and, you know, I don't believe in three times.
Really quick, if I could, you did say something about employment, is that correct? What are some of the things that you're proposing or you want to have put in place, should you be elected into office?
In terms of people being employed?
Yes. Employment, better wages, how are you planning to increase that in Ward Five?
Well, that's something I hadn't thought about, but that is a very good question, thank you, Zakia, for that. When we're talking about employment, people do need better wages. I mean, but then we have to, but it's, it's, it's not just as easy as that. Because you have to look at the employee versus the employer, and I've been both. So as on the employer side, we know that businesses, if we take, if you say you take the income too high in terms of hourly wage, then you have businesses saying, I can't afford to do it. I have overhead expenses and things like that, so it's, it's twofold. You have your business owner saying, I can't afford that, when you go up on that, on that hourly wage, they, they then increases their overhead expenses and what they have to pay out. So there's nothing really easy about these types of conversations.
Right.
Then on the flip side of that, you have an employee saying, hey, they're asking for three times the rent, and I gotta be able to show this on a pay stub. And I can't show it, because I'm not getting paid enough money over here at, at job A.
Yeah, I think we all understand that, Erica. What I, I, I think my question more so is leading towards, you spoke about economic development, right? And bringing in new buildings, different things in that aspect. So in bringing in economic development, there has to be jobs, because somebody has to do this building, right? So how does that, how have you factored in, or have you even thought about factoring in the people that currently live there? That are actually qualified to do these particular jobs? And they're not getting hired? Because I, I understand the pay rate and how that's pushing people out. And for me, that's an even bigger issue, because when we think about that, if we bring in economic development and we have these new people coming and building, and they're bringing in their own people, which means that the people that currently live there are being pushed out, because they can no longer afford to be there. And they're not having jobs created for them to even be in a sustainable place to currently live there. So are we working for the developers, or are we working for the people?
Okay, thank, okay, I understand your question now, thank you. So no, what we want to do, because some of the complaints I've heard, even when they were talking about the hotel they were looking to bring in, people were very concerned, okay, well, who's gonna work in this? Like, like you said, Pete, they want to know, are you gonna be getting people from the community? I believe we should be getting people from the community to work. If they have a skill set, we can train them, we should have them working. If they want to work, we should have employment for people from the community. We should have them working. If they want to work, we should have employment for people from the community. So we're not just bringing outsiders in and then what's happening to the people that are already there. So those are very important. Even when we talked about some of the other projects, people were concerned, how many minorities do we have? And we want to be specific about what minority meant, because we know minority can mean a white woman. And we just want to say minorities. And so we want to be, I know they wanted language that was more specific in what type of minorities we were talking about. And so I think that those discussions are very important as we bring, talking to developers.
Have you, have you actually thought about any of that? Do you have a plan in place? I think that's more so my question. Have a plan in place and if if so, what does that look like? And if not, what are some of the things that you think you should be considering to get a plan in place?
Well, what I should be considering is what I as as we're talking about development, when we're first talking to these developers, we want to put together something that says, hey, you have to have a certain percentage from the community to fill these type of positions that you're going to need. And so I think that those conversations are important upfront. So that we have that in writing, because a lot of times what I've been hearing is I go to different, a lot of this stuff isn't in writing. And a lot of communities like, hey, we need that in writing because we've heard this rhetoric before. But yeah, it wasn't writing, so it didn't happen. So the main thing is to make sure that we have different things in writing concerning we have so many minorities. We have so many people from the community that you have to hire. And that, okay, what positions are going to be available and how many of those positions have to be occupied by by a number of our people in the community or a number of minorities. So I think those are upfront conversations. You want to do business in Ward five, this is what that looks like. And this is what I'm looking for this to do.
Okay, so when you say that.
We get those things in writing upfront.
You're saying you're prepared to have those conversations?
Absolutely. Because I don't want, I don't want my people left out. So absolutely.
I want to, I want to thank you for your time. I'm sorry, but I do have to go. My assistant, my auto assistant will continue to record and be here. So if you put any questions in or you have any questions for us, I'll get it and I'll, you know, I'll definitely get back to you. But you know, you can always reach me on my cell phone anyway.
Thank you, Zakiya, and I say.
You're welcome. I will see you guys later at some point in time.
So I'm I'm gonna ask this question. Obviously, the Old Town Tavern, which became Harlem Knights, they're talking about there. What's your opinions? What's your, what what's your thoughts on that project? For against, why for, why against, what should happen? So tell us what you think on on a project like that in the Historic West Side.
Yeah, you heard me speak a little bit about that. Yeah, they were calling it Harlem Knights. They've changed the night name to West Side Hotel. That was the constituents. There were a couple of different meetings that I attended for that. I know the liaison, Ms. Lisa Mayo, I know her very well. She's the consultant on that project. So I sat in on those meetings. I am for it, and I'm gonna tell you why. I like anything in the name of progress, but what I really liked was the developer, that he listened to the people. The people say, hey, we don't like this. We we don't just want to be able to rent in there because remember they have housing. They're looking to have housing in that project as well. So they just had it as rental property. So some people say, hey, we'd like to be able to actually purchase, like, you know, purchase a unit, which I thought was magnificent. I said, oh, that is really great because I would like to purchase a unit there. So he really, he came back. I liked that he came back, spoke to the people, was very open, he was very transparent. And that was back in January and he said, he listened to everything. People were very concerned about the height of the project. It was too many. I forgot how many stories they had, but they dropped it down. So it's something, so he really listened to the people and I thought that that was really important. But I don't think and people expressed their concerns at that meeting in January saying, hey, we like what you're saying, Mr. Developer, but they were upset with the current leadership. And that current leadership was present. Unfortunately, he did ended up, he ended up leaving. But people were a little bit angry because I felt like what's happening is they felt like, okay, this project was put in place and we weren't really told everything. And so that's why I meant by having those different community conversations, if those need to be more often. We need to really let the people have a voice, not make it look like they have a voice after we decided what was going to happen. And so I think, and I know the consultant was upset with the current leadership. So there was a lot, you know, a lot of fingers being pointed. But what I liked is that it means progress. And I know people don't progress cannot, you know, you're looking at changes in the community where there hasn't been a lot of changes. It makes people feel uneasy. It makes people feel uncomfortable. So I could hear that also in their voices. But the most part, they were, I think they were ready to move forward with this project once they got their questions answered. I felt the community felt a lot of, a lot better about that project than before the meeting, because before the meeting, they were pissed. They were mad. They were having no parts of it. But I felt like when the developer was there answering the questions and being very honest and willing to put things that the community was asking for in writing, because that was what they were saying. We want these things in writing. I agree with that, that they must be in writing. And I felt good about the project moving forward. I feel like it's going to be great progress. But I feel like even though we're putting this very beautiful thing, this beautiful structure, we're going to also have to address what we're doing with everything around it. Because I want everything around it to also be beautiful as well. Not just we have this big beautiful thing and everything over here is not up to par. So those were my only concerns. How do we, I don't know if those conversations haven't had. Or if there's anything in place to address what's around, what would be around that beautiful structure, but that's some of the conversation we have to have.
Martin, you have a question before I ask a question?
Sure. So earlier you mentioned, when you were talking about the top three issues that you wanted to to address or tackle. One of those was public safety. First, give me an idea of what your, what your mindset is when you talk about public safety and what needs to happen to address that issue.
So public safety is definitely talking about our, our communication and our relationship with our police force. We do have Bolden, Bolden Area Command. And so I want to make sure that we're staying strong in there, our relationship, we're fostering positive relationships with our police and maintaining those positive relations. I think Bolden Area Command is doing a great job. Under Cabinet Mayhill, they're doing a great job. So I'm really happy about that. So we want to keep that going. So that's part of public safety, making sure that people feel feel safe in their homes, they feel safe wherever they go inside of Ward five. Also, public safety. Do we have red lights where they need to be? I was at a luncheon on Friday and the sheriff spoke about having the red light cameras. All of that's part of public safety because people are running red lights like crazy. So those are some of the things, making sure that crosswalks are safe. So what I would, what I would be doing is actually going and analyzing those areas all around Ward five to see, okay, where, where do we need more traffic lights? Do we need a crosswalk somewhere? Is it safe for children to cross to go to schools? Cross the street to go to school. So those, all those things I would like to reassess and make sure that everything is up to par.
Okay, okay, thank, thank you for that. That that helps me see that you that you definitely, you're trending in the in the direction that that I was thinking. So it looks like we're we're on the same page, but going down that lane there.
I'm glad to hear that, Martin. Because look, I wasn't sure. Again, I was like, well, dang, well, okay. But I'm glad that we're on the same page. But you know, these are things that I've really put thought in on how because it's a lot, it's enough to say, okay, we can always talk about the problem. But let's talk about the solution as well. And I'm not saying I have all the answers because I don't. I do not. I like to have a lot of smart people around me as well. And you know, I talk to brains, man, it's not just me. I like to have a lot of smart people around me. And I know it's going to take a team of people where we're saying, hey, these are the problems, let's talk about the solutions. Because we could talk about problems all day long. But we're not talking about how we're going to solve those problems and really have effective change. Because look, we've had a lot of people in Ward five in this in this city council's feet. And I'm gonna tell you something, I'm I'm be real with you. It is, Ward five is not where it should be. It should be eons ahead of where it is now. And it is not there. And it it does not make me happy. So my thing is I gotta take care, take care of the people. That's why I said I am the people's choice. Because at the end of the day, it's not about no party. It's not even about politics. It's all about them and the and addressing their needs the best way that we can. Really serving the people, not just being a politician, but being a servant of the people. And that is, you know, my biggest thing, my mentor was Harvey Mumford. He was my political mentor. Would go go to his house many times and have many conversations. And so you know, he to make sure his legacy is upheld is all about the people because he was a people servant.
And I can, I can agree with that part as well. So so going back to to your point about the who has the communication. So two things, you said we have the communication with the police department. I want to make sure you understand the definition of we first. We as in the city council member and the police officer, or we as in the average Joe Schmo person on the street have that relationship with the police officer. I want to make you understand before I ask my question.
And so when we're talking about those fostering those positive relation, we want those relationships to be between the people and the police department. Yeah, definitely. But also, but also between city council too. Because it's our job to make sure, you know, we we deal with the police force with Metro.
Agreed. And the reason why I asked that question because, so and you already mentioned that you believe that Sheriff McMayhill is doing a great job, but I've heard the same from others. But do, do the constituents in Ward five feel that they are treated fairly by law enforcement?
You know, that is a good question and I will get back to you on that because as I'm still talking to people and meeting with people, those are some of the questions I'm going to be asking. How do you feel about the police department? Do you feel that, do you feel safe? Do you feel like you're being treated fairly? So those, because I mean, I, as a city council, I need to know those answers. I think he's doing a great job, but the average, the average citizen may have something different to say. They may have an experience that happened that we need to be aware of on the city council.
Exactly, exactly. Because he he may be, I don't, I don't know anything to say that he's not, but he's a, he's a person that still may not necessarily have anything to do with encounters. And I'm not saying I know of any negative encounters either. I don't want to mischaracterize our friends in Metro. I'm saying, but everyday people have different experiences that may not make it to the data that we see on.
Absolutely. So in that's where I feel if we're having these community conversations on a regular basis, we're able to hear if there is anything. And then at that point, I'm I'm at Sheriff McMayhill's door saying, hey, we have a situation, we have some issues that we need to discuss. So, yeah, and that's why the community come, because if you're not talking to the community, how you know what's going on? You don't.
Let me ask you. Let me jump in. I'm gonna ask you to give me, and I'm gonna say, because we're getting towards the end. Just a overview, and I'm gonna say a two, three overview. What are the key roles of the of the person that is coming as scout? What do they have responsibility? What are their key roles? So people will know. And if you're elected in your first ninety, hundred and twenty days, what are the top three or four things that are within the role of a city councilman? I mean, I'm sorry, War Three, yeah, War Three City Council. War Five, I'm sorry. It's that old age. But what would you be focusing on and attempting to change for the better of the community?
Okay, so we'll talk about some of the city council functions. So I know people like to talk about the school board stuff, but I tell people that city council does not directly deal with the issues of CCSD. Do I think that there should be hand, all hands on deck with all the drama we have going on in CCSD? Absolutely. But I like to put that because people like to come in. And that may, you know, because they don't understand our role that we play as city council, city council, we're gonna, we're gonna look at that annual city budget with, along with the city manager. Where if you're coming in, you want, go want to do a city project within the city limits of Las Vegas, you're going to become before the city council. We're going to also issue business licenses. So if you're doing business within with earmarked as the city of Las Vegas, I like to tell people just because your address says Las Vegas, that doesn't mean that it is within the city limits of Las Vegas. So it's a little tricky when you're trying to figure, okay, my address says Vegas, but you're you're not really in the city of Las Vegas. So and then another thing is zoning. So land, we're over land. So we actually, the city actually owns land. And so those are things you can come and do and deal with that too. So zoning. So those were some of the things that we have on our plate as members of the city council. And of course, like I said, I would be one vote, but we have, we have six total wards and we have the mayor as well. And then as terms of looking at what I would like to address in my first ninety to a hundred days, really and truly is getting digging in a little deeper in terms of doing those necessary assessments. Because we can't just start doing and we don't know what we're dealing with. So first of all, doing those necessary assessments within the first thirty to forty five days, seeing what it is on the plate, because there's projects that are ongoing now. And I might have to say, okay, less, they're going to be briefing me on everything from what we have on our plate right now. What's our, what projects are already undergoing? So those are things I have to look at in our timelines for that. Then I can go in and say, okay, can we file thirteen these or are we actually committed? So we'll look at those things that are ongoing. Then I want to look at new projects that we want to put in place. Like the redevelopment they were talking about. Where where are we with Harlem Knights slash West Side Hotel? What other development can we now bring to the table? Homelessness is one of my top things that I want to look at at the very beginning. Because I, and affordable housing, those are really my top two things to look at at the very beginning. So that's where we are. And looking at what that's going to look like moving forward and how we move those projects forward and relieve people, give people that relief that they're looking for. Because this housing thing is 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 really, it bothers me. So affordable housing and homelessness are going to be two of the top things that I think need to be tackled first.
Martin, do you have any another question you want to throw out here?
You know, I think we we've, we've pretty much hit the hottest topics for me. She 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 said that the the three hottest topics, when I'm talking to different people, she actually mentioned them as her top three. So I think that's, that's a good thing. Just, I would like to continue conversation another time just on more specific strategy on these, you know.
I would love to sit down with you off the Zoom. And because it sounds like you may have, I think you may have some ideas that you want to throw at me. I feel like that. I, yeah, I felt that. I felt that. I would love to, look, let me tell you something. This is not some, this is not, oh, Dr. Erica can come and she has all the answers because I do not. I'm the first one to tell you. Do I have a good clue on how we can get some things done? Yes. But it takes, it on, it takes a village to raise a child, it takes a village to get this city going and getting it going in the right direction, particularly in Ward five. I, you know, I see both of you in the community as well. So you guys know what's going on out there as well. I, you know, I see both of you in the community as well, so you guys know what's going on out there as well. So I'm gonna need your help out there hitting these streets, I love what you're doing. Um, with uh providing things to people, uh food and the way you're doing that, I think it's great. I really want to applaud you for that.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, well, what we're gonna do, first of all, we want to thank you, Dr. Smith. Time is a, time is a, 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 a healthy commodity and to sit down and take time out while you're running. We do appreciate that, we're gonna try to actually see if we can put some things together, maybe even a forum. Um, to, to get the candidates together and see what they're doing. But this is our vehicle to give people a chance to see who's running and what their things, uh, and what their beliefs and values are. So we're gonna end this by letting you, you got about a minute to, to give your elevator speech. Uh, then uh, Martin, if you want to make, take another thirty seconds or a minute, you can make a, a comment and then I will take it home. Okay?
Okay, well, first of all, I want to tell people how to contact me or to, they can go to www dot EricaForLasVegas dot com. That's E R I K A F O R L A S V E G A S dot com. You can feel free to go on my website, you can see my bio, you can see what, uh, you can read more about my platforms. You can see what I'm doing, um, you can also get in touch with me, I believe all my social media there is there also. Um, if you're looking to email me, you can go to ericaforlasvegas at gmail dot com. You can also go to Erica Smith at ericaforlasvegas dot com. And those are great ways to get, if you want to volunteer, if you want to help with the campaign or even donate to the campaign. We would love to have you, just get in touch with me and see what, see how you can help. And that's all I've got, you know, look, y'all know I'm the right choice. And so I like to tell people I'm the people's choice, that's the new mantra. Even though we know that brains do matter, but I like to really, my focus now is on the people. And um, you're looking at Dr. Erica Smith for the people's choice.
All right, but thank you for that again, Dr. Smith. Um, you, uh, you, like I said, the, the, the most important topics to me. For, for, for at least as it uh applies to this level, uh, you've mentioned three of them. And so I applaud you for that. Uh, thank you for the work that you, that you've been doing and, and getting out there and being, and being um in the know. And a lot of things that people are not gonna know, so just keep, keep doing what you're doing and I wish you the best.
Okay, thank you for having me, good night, gentlemen.
Okay, we will talk to you, this is Brian Harris, Independent Black Voters, our vote is not free. Folks, take the time to watch the videos, encourage your people to watch the videos, we must become informed voters. We must vote with agenda, when you do not vote, then someone else owns your agenda. This is Brian Harris, the Independent Black Voter, signing off. Peace.